... has been those first day statuaries. Do we have any community participation? Jason, anything to read in?
I do not have anything to read in.
All right, we'll just have to read that. Go to the West Side Elementary and student presentation.
All right. Let me share the screen.
Before you hit play, Jason.
Yeah.
I just would like to introduce, we have a couple of people here before we roll. And then, just in case they want to add, this little presentation, Angie Kilton, Dee Smith, I see Carrie Brown's on. We've been working on co-plan, co-serv. And just a quick background is we're really trying hard to equitably push in some of our special ed kids. And what's required with this co-plan, co-serv is we'll have a special ed teacher co-planning and co-serving all of the kids in the classroom with a general education teacher. So I don't know if Angie or Carrie, do you want to speak anymore to that before the show or just take questions?
You have just unmuted yourself. There you go, Carrie.
Oh, I guess unmuting is a sign of I was raising my hand. Yeah, so I guess just to add what Ben was saying, from a second grade perspective, this year it's been a really nice model or strategy to be following in the classroom, especially coming off the year of COVID, the virtual trimester that we had last spring. I would say the biggest benefit is it's having a second teacher in the classroom. And the students in my classroom are getting what we would consider, you know, a double dose because they are not only working with me in the reading and math block, but they also get to rotate through with Mrs. Smith. So it's just really, really been a great, you know, method to implement within the classroom as far as meeting the needs of all students.
I second what Carrie said. I was a little hesitant at first just because change is always a little nerve-wracking, but I have absolutely loved it. It's what I love the most about it is that I don't feel like there's the segregation of your special ed.
Angie, you're muted.
Okay, I'm done. Just kidding. Somebody could walk in our classroom and I feel strongly couldn't tell who the special ed kids were and who the reg ed kids were. And I also don't know that they could even necessarily tell who the reg ed teacher was versus the spec ed teacher because everybody is working together. We're all working with all of the kids. And like Carrie said, it allows us, instead of having the opportunity to maybe work with four groups a week, there's groups that we're able to get to like eight or nine times a week. So it's just been extremely beneficial and I'm looking forward to the data at the end of the year to see what we can find out. So it's been really fun.
Yeah, and I think it's important to realize it's like when Angie said it's, you know, eight times in a week, like the way the groups work in my classroom this year with their abilities is those groups are getting two contacts in a day. So they're getting it with myself and with Dee. So, you know, in a sense, it's, I just don't even know how you could ask for anything better.
Right.
And then from my standpoint, you know, being in the classroom, keeping my students with their peers and whatnot has been very beneficial. They're not losing that valuable instructional time that they would be losing if I was pulling them down to the spec ed environment. They're getting that main instruction, which is extremely crucial, especially as we go further along in their academic career. I'm finding in some of those upper grades that have had the notorious just pull out, no push in, we're spending a lot of makeup time, making up lessons that they've lost, redoing Lucy lessons that are at their reading level for, you know, implementing those strategies that they've missed because they've been pulled out so much.
Not to mention from, you know, the little ones, I'm all the way at one end of the building and the spec ed room is at the opposite end. So with the little ones, it can be, I mean, 10 minutes of transition time, just five minutes to get there and five minutes to get back. So not pulling them out saves that as well, which has been wonderful.
And if you think of it from an intervention perspective, any student that has identified tier two or three, those students are now getting three pullouts, not pullout, sorry, they're getting three adult interactions in a day as opposed to just the classroom and then the intervention. So now they're getting two within the workshop block as well as their regular intervention time. So there's a lot of positives to that as well.
And I've really enjoyed the fact that it's very data-driven. And so I can touch on two different topics that I may not be able to touch on in a pullout. So for instance, Angie might be working on blending in sounds and I might be working on a reread of a book, which if I had them just down in the room by myself, we would maybe get to just that reread of a book. You know, going through those rotations and touching on those different skills all in one block period definitely benefits the students because they're able to apply both taught skills in the same setting and not have to take it and then try to apply it back in the classroom. And I can also see if they're mastering those skills or not right then and there. I don't have to, you know, constantly go back and forth between the teachers and ask, you know, here, are they understanding this concept? This is what we've been working on. They know exactly what we're working on, when we're working on it because she sees it.
And that applies to the reg ed kids too. I mean, everybody in the classroom is getting a double dose of everything, which is very nice.
I'm just going to add that I'm super, super, super proud of this team.
Thank you.
Hey, do you want me to show the presentation now?
Sure.
Hit it.
Is there sound on it?
Right after this, I believe.
In the beginning, it was definitely time to meet our common planning time to really collaborate. And when we first got started, finding space in the room for our groups to make sure our groups were meeting one with another and putting in modeling and practicing those procedures with the students, making sure the expectations were going by, whether it was for reading, it was for reading, it had to be a complete alignment. So that way, my teaching wasn't taking over your teaching. Today, the other thing that we were trying to do with the presentation, first, the beginning, we had some larger groups and then realized we wanted to bring the top school partner and we were having to be on tour and every.
I think one of the things that I've had is when we brought in our students who've been the same grade level, but in different clusters and having us service them. Some of the additions we've had is that they've been at the same level somewhere, how much seconds we spend in this cluster, that it's been able to be pretty mobile. But that's not always possible. So then time becomes a factor in how we fit both the students' special education and not just serving our co-serv model. So that's been a very large challenge that I've had over the past year. Where I have seen the biggest benefit from the co-teach poster model is that it benefits all students. Having Mrs. Smith in the room allows for us to group not only the special education students, but the regular education students, which is allowing more contact in a small group teacher-led setting for all the students in the classroom. So when I think about how that impacts them in their reading and math, they are getting more teacher-led instruction and in an ability group format, which allows them more exposure throughout the day and over the weeks and school year. That's just the exposure that I would be able to give them if I could have my help. My special students now have a need of learning to receive their special design instruction. They received a regular lecture and collaborated between the reg ed teacher and myself. The students are segregated through several barriers, several locations. They are mixed in with their peers who are at the same ability level and levels. And also by having the lessons differentiated, we do, we prevent it actually getting so large that we would have to have students see the lecture. If they have the same skill, we're taught and identify each other because we are not perfect. We just gather about the type of grade, whether it's a little bit background to teach, instead of being all sound, I would teach it in a way that does reach students, but that Leah teaches that, that she makes it happen. So it's a lot of, I would hope that both students and we for more practice and then both. There's many benefits for staff. To start, I did not know Dee very well, given her appearance, and need to get to know her professionally much, much better. We are able to be collaborating for, once a meeting for our lessons in how we're going to rotate our groups. And we also collaborate on Wednesdays to do lesson things. So there's a lot of collaboration, which we'll be learning new things from her, technology, things from her, and we're able to have, share our resources. She's had some resources that I didn't have access to that I'm now able to use. And it helps that we both know the IP of the students' tests, so that we're able to serve them. When I think about the positives in the co-teach poster model and working directly with Mrs. Smith, I have to say that it has definitely deepened our relationship. I have a better understanding of the, all of the elements that go into the special education department regarding combination, laws, IEP minutes. If anything, I think I learned tremendously from Dee, all that goes into what she has planned for on a daily, weekly basis with the students as they come in with their different IEPs. We go personally and professionally, and I really enjoyed our time working in the classroom this year.
I just would like to just say my thank you to, you know, Angie, Dee, and Carrie, Vince, I think I saw him join in, Sabrina and Leah too. I know this was a big undertaking. It's constantly changing, you know, schedules have to be adjusted consistently when we have, you know, students added into it with IEPs and minutes changed and that sort of thing. But the work you guys have all done has been fantastic. And I know here at West Side, we'd like to grow that so that we can get that co-plan, co-serv model K through five next year.
Questions for the group?
Didn't any of the IEPs have to be changed then? I know personally, like for my son, it would stay right in there that he would be pulled from class and have that one-on-one or two-on-one or however, it's 20 minutes, 30 minutes. I don't know if that's changed. I know IEPs have changed since.
Dee, do you want to answer that or should I?
Did you guys hear her question? She asked if any of the IEPs had to be modified, rewritten to reflect this instructional model as opposed to being pulled out?
Yes and no. So some of my IEPs were rewritten, but they were, the minutes stayed exactly the same. I just changed the location of providing the services. And then a few of the IEPs also still include an additional pullout time. And so they get pulled out and they're in the classroom. So in Carrie's room, those students get pulled out once a week for a half hour and then they're in the classroom for the remainder, there's a half hour, we put it as a half hour that they're in the classroom in that gen ed setting. But they get pulled and then when we pull them, I do an additional Lucy lesson with them at a level, their current level. So not at the second grade level, but their level, so that they're getting that additional instruction where they're at so they can apply those skills because it's easier for them to apply those skills than it is the second grade skills that they're not at the second grade level. And then as we've updated the IEP ahead of our annuals, we've changed minutes to reflect the co-serv model.
Amy's getting with her hand raised. Amy, you raised your hand before me. Go ahead, Amy.
Oh, okay. Dee, I want to thank you for that great explanation. I think it's important to note that any specially designed instruction that certainly needs to be given if it's a specific intervention that would not work well in the regular classroom certainly is still part of the IEP and utilized. And yet, some of the other things can be accomplished within the classroom. And so people like Dee and Leah and our other special education teachers are carefully making those decisions when they are writing those IEPs. But specially designed instruction certainly is continuing, just as Carrie mentioned, tier three interventions. Some of our students also see the reading specialist in a small room for 30 minutes a day. When Dee refers to the Lucy lessons, what she's talking about is the regular curriculum. For our balanced literacy program, we use the Lucy Cockens units of study. But what I'm hearing and I like also is there are times she's reaching to the grade below to bring in lessons that are more at their reading level to scaffold and then they're able to do, you know, a better job when they're immersed in the grade two content. So wonderful job to the West Side team. They really are leading on this and thank you guys. Great presentation tonight. Rita, your turn.
No, I just, I took one thing to say first of all is I think it's time for me to go. So much of the work, I'm, this is what we've been working on. And to see it really happening is just really powerful. And, but I wanted to say that specially designed instruction is not synonymous with location.
Sure.
Specially designed instruction that is prescribed in IEP is, can occur in the general education environment, it can occur in the special ed environment. So as Dee said, she might have just changed the location, but she didn't change the minutes. So the minutes are still prescribed. And so that's important to realize. And I think that's a huge mind shift from years ago when I taught, because before special education in the old days was synonymous with location. And I'm sure, and when you, you know, it was like special ed was a place. Special education is not a place that you go. Special education is a service you receive and that you're entitled to.
And I just, I would. Some of the curriculum. So in terms of the instruction that we're using, I know I've kept the instruction in the curriculum the same that I use in both Angie and in Carrie's room. So the curriculum that I was currently using with the students before we made the switch is the same curriculum that I'm giving them in the gen ed setting.
And I was just going to add kind of with what Rita and Dee were both saying, as far as like the ebb and flow of everything, I think this model really helps with, in the past, like Rita was kind of saying, you know, they still had their minutes. So I'm thinking about like a class I would have had a few years back where they would get pulled out for their minutes and then they would come back and we would still be in our reading block. But they come in and it's kind of a little discombobulated because they're coming into the middle of where we were, you know, because they went out to do their minutes separately with the special education teacher. So that's one other huge advantage of the push-in is that they're there for the whole thing. Everybody is there for the whole thing. And so they don't come in midway or at the end or, you know, it's just a lot better flow too for those students.
Yeah, having had a student go through that, that old scenario, I'm thrilled to see this happening. Angie Kilton was my son's first grade teacher and he's now, Angie, he's graduating from college in three years.
As if I didn't feel old enough already.
But I mean, I feel my son received amazing help, you know, through the special ed program that we had, but I'm thrilled to see where you've taken it. Because I think that was the biggest downfall was him constantly being removed from the classroom. And it always made him feel different then. So I love this.
And especially like when we were talking about the tier two and tier three interventions earlier with our tier two kids and our tier three kids leaving and, you know, others going out for maybe a sensory break and it's just, there's so much coming and going that nobody's singled out. So I don't, you know, I don't know that any of the kids in our room could say, you know, these are the ones that work with Mrs. Smith because it's always, it's always changing, which I think is amazing because then nobody is singled out.
Exactly. I love that people know who Mrs. Smith is.
Yeah.
Other than a couple of kids where I'd have to make that long walk down the hallways in her room.
Yep.
Because that was always our issue too, coming into the elementary was that they do feel different. And there is that perceived, you know, I'm different for having to leave and now I'm having to catch up. So then there's anxiety. So I love that. I love that he gets to be a teacher, which he always has been, but to everybody.
Yeah.
And just a friendly face. So that's, yeah, I love it.
Any other questions for the group? All right, before we let you all go, great work on the presentation. Thank you for sharing it, everyone. I do want to, since I have Carrie on here, embarrass her quick, but I want to give a big thanks to Carrie because Carrie switched the grade levels that she was planning to teach. How many dates before school started, Carrie?
Dave.
Okay, so do you want me to be totally honest or? Okay, well, it was a long weekend, we'll give you that. No, I think we sat down and had that discussion Wednesday evening and we started school the next Tuesday.
Well, you almost had a whole week down there.
And my little sister may or may not have gotten married that weekend, but no, it was great.
With all the shifting of the students and the staffing with options and those numbers, I seriously want to thank Carrie for, despite the wedding going on and all the plans, we made that shift right at the last minute. So thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. I was happy to do it and I laugh, but it was fine, Mr. Tadlock.
Do you think we asked what the rollout is then for next year, since this was the model for first grade and so in the hope that you go, Kate, or sorry, Kate, my.
Yeah, go ahead. It's big because we're kind of behind the mic so they can't hear you very well.
Oh, okay. So the middle school and high school have been doing some co-plan and co-serv under a lot of leadership by Sarah Bosch the last couple of years. And this all, like I said, comes, or like you've heard, comes out of that whole equity model. So as we work to grow, you know, equity and those things in our school district, we're pushing this forward as well. So we have been talking about this about the last year and at the elementary level about the last year, we've been giving some professional development in what's called high leverage practices, things that are, can be utilized and best practices to utilize in an inclusive setting. And the paraprofessionals have been getting inclusive professional development as well. And the plan is to broaden it next year and to solidify it. One thing that needs to really happen is to have a master's schedule that facilitates the effectiveness of this because you can't co-serv and co-plan if the special education teacher can't be in the class when they need to be in the class. So we all as administrators heard a great professional development last year that had to do with having a master's schedule. And Amy's been working with the principals to get that set up. So you can see this has just been a big collaborative effort on a lot of people's part to get this rolling. There'll be more professional development moving forward toward the end of the year and at the beginning of next year and hope will be to expand it. It's what becomes difficult because you only have so many special ed teachers, you know, and you have so many grades. So it takes a great master scheduling, great classroom grouping, and then it takes really a lot of collaboration on the teacher's part. But we're hopefully, through the collaboration that Amy and the principals and I are working on, it will be setting them up for success. That's the goal for next year.
Well, if you want to keep it the same in first grade next year, I'm fine with that.
Yeah. Same here.
Right.
Two hands are always better than one, right?
Thank you again, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Yeah, take care. Okay, and I apologize to those in the Google Meet. When I pull up the presentation, it doesn't show on our screen yet. So we're to the middle school. I don't, Mr. McBurney, if you'd like to introduce it. And now I believe you're going to be turning it over to Mrs. Katie James to do the presentation, right? But either way, yeah, go ahead, Ryan, and take it over.
All right, good evening, everyone. Excited to be here with you tonight as we talk about the middle school really trying to capture on the momentum that COVID has provided us and really getting outdoors and really taking advantage of the wonderful landscape that we have around the school area. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Katie James, who is an active member in our PTO and a parent of a sixth grader, Parker, at the middle school, who's done a really wonderful job of involving students, staff, and the community in our planning to move forward with an outdoor project. And with that, I'll turn it over and not spoil any of her surprises.
Ryan is my hype man and can go with me anywhere. That was great, thanks. Hi, everyone, I'm Katie James. I know most of you in the room, but if you don't, Ryan just explained it. My, I come from Tibbetts with a very active PTA and the PTO at the middle school has been very welcoming. And the group really felt passionate that the best way to engage parents and the staff and join the two together was to come together with a collaborative project. And Ms. Rimey had a brilliant plan because the teachers really saw a need for more outdoor learning space. And that was something that the parents really wanted to embrace as well. So the first thing that we did was speak to the staff specifically and put out a survey of things that they wanted to see and things that they were interested in building on in that area. And then actually last month, we talked to the kids and asked the same types of questions. What we were able to identify is that there's two solid needs at the middle school. On one side is the outdoor education area where there can be classrooms not only taught outdoors, but also outdoor learning, which as I'm quickly learning are two different things. Being able to educate students on the environment around them and also utilize that as an additional tool in education, but also giving them a safe environment in which to do that. So we can either build just desks and classrooms outside, or we can teach them about the marshland that the school is sitting on. The other identified area is the recreational space. And that's where the kids have been having recess, which is the parking lot, the extended parking lot in the middle school, which several of the kids in the survey lovingly coined as the prison yard because there's not a lot for them to do. So the group decided to stick together. We got 49 students who actively said, yes, sign me up, I want to make a difference. And we got about 22 parents and teachers to join together. So we've gotten together for the last eight weeks and wanted to present an idea to you. We have a pitch, basically. What we would like to do is reshape the middle school landscape. There are some challenges that we are well aware of and I'm sure you all are aware of also, if you've ever walked the grounds of the property, and that it's extremely moist. And then taking into consideration what we can do with that. I am not a landscape designer. So I actually was watching Dateline or NBC Nightly News, and there was a story about a nonprofit out in Portland called Green School Yards America that specifically designs spaces and helps educational facilities work with the areas that they have, mostly in urban environments. Well, I emailed them and they were interested in helping Elkhorn, Wisconsin Middle School, which was really great. And they gave us a little bit of a boost, which is they partnered us with a landscape design team called Learning Landscapes. They have offices in Oregon and in Milwaukee. Carrie White was our designer who, for pro bono, came to our property and just gave us a bunch of advice. And what you're seeing is her site analysis that she completed after speaking with us. She was only supposed to be there for an hour, right, Ryan? And she ended up staying for two and a half because she saw so much potential in the area around the building and to shape it and turn it into something really special. The areas that you're seeing is what The areas that you're seeing is what she pitched as what she saw and recognized. You see that little swirly arrow between the two pods there. That's what we lovingly call the wind tunnel. If you've walked on that area, it will pull your hair right out of your head, and it is so windy. But what I saw as a challenge, she saw as a great opportunity for the science classrooms that are in that area to put some sort of circular, teach kids about wind. Or the art department could create an art sculpture that could spin in that. So it was great having an outset set of eyes to look at our area and to really see what we could do. Jason, if you could please go to the next, I think, number. These are pictures of our space. As you can see, it was a beautifully sunny day. And all of the mud came out for reviewing too, so you guys could see that as well, is what she saw. And then we were there at recess time, so there the kids are playing in the paved area. If you could go to number three. So she took a look into consideration what we could do. We also had a few wish lists. What you see in one, two, three, four, and five on your screen are potential learning areas. Three, four, and five are, could be something as simple as just putting some tree stumps out there so that the kids have some non-conventional learning space. Two and four are more conventional areas with actual desks. A, B, and C are very similar, but more of a workspace for the ag department or tech. And then D is an amazing concept, which is an outdoor amphitheater so that the music and band departments can actually practice outside and maybe even hold a few concerts. Six and seven, up at the top, are special. Expanding the recreational area, which is where the extended parking lot is now. And then she also saw an opportunity for a commons area where kids could sit and relax and wait under the view of the office windows that happen to be right there and also give them a chance to wait for their parents to come and pick up and have a safe social gathering space. So I said all that to say, we see a lot of opportunities for improvement there. We've already begun basic, we paved the parking lot with games. We got donations from Lowe's and from families, and we're adding another Gagga Ball pit this month. We've got 60 tree stumps being delivered this week for two immediate outdoor learning areas so that teachers can do more of a conventional learning style. But we don't see an end in sight. It could be so much more than that. And I really want to make the outside of the middle school reflect the passion of the teachers on the inside. And that is creative, outside-of-the-box learning opportunities and spaces for them to do those things. And then also, we can really improve student morale if we give them a wonderful recreational space to just relax and break free. When we did the survey with the kids, the number one thing they wanted was a ball. Just give us a ball to play with. So the PTO responded immediately and we spent $500 and we're going to do that annually on basketballs, footballs, dodgeballs, that sort of thing. Other things that they really wanted were swings, which surprised me a lot personally. But that was actually not unique to just sixth grade. It went across sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. 275 students asked for a swing set, and I think that that is something that we can definitely provide. What I'm asking for tonight, and with Ryan's support, is that we would like the opportunity to explore this further. I've already talked to some fundraising sources to really reshape that landscape. I spoke to the Elkhorn Fund Board last week, and they were extremely excited for the opportunity to help develop the middle school education areas outside and really help that transition from the elementary level up to the high school by providing them the more creative resources that they could use to really get kids excited about learning.
Excellent. Very well done, Katie, and put together. I did put it on the agenda as a proposal. I wanted, I knew that they had a kind of a comprehensive plan and wanted the board to be in the loop as well because there are structures that would be going up over time as that gets added. So I didn't want to make it a formal approval process. But Katie, also make note, reach out to me sometime this week. The Education Foundation, they have some resources to help with one of the installations or an area as well.
Well, I saw you had me as an action item, so I thought I was just, I would like $150,000 to build an outdoor classroom amphitheater. Do I have a second? No, I'm just joking. But I really think that it's a great opportunity. We understand completely that this is going to be a multi-phase project. We're not going to get this done overnight, which is why we wanted to start with basics, just some tree stumps, so the teachers could have the opportunity to utilize it and see what they can do first. When they've determined what that is, then we're going to go to the next phase and we're going to provide them a shelter to do that, you know, those types of things. We also need to address the drainage issues on the recreational side.
Katie, questions for Katie?
I don't have a question, sorry. I just would like to add that if you're doing fundraising, make sure the board knows about it because if we don't have kids in that level, we may not see it unless you see it on Facebook or something. But make sure you, that we know about it because it's easy to support a lot of things if we know about it.
Right.
Can I comment too? Just also to whatever involvement that kids can have.
Yeah.
The ownership, Katie, you know, to involve the students, if it's hauling, rolling those stumps or whatever, you know, all the better.
Well, I was even thinking, I mean, we always, for Losa Homes, we always do a project with the middle schoolers every year. And we have the last two years. And I'm just sitting there looking at those benches and I'm thinking, hey, that's something that, you know, we can come in and the kids, we can teach the kids how to make those benches and they can have ownership in that, so.
That would be fantastic. I absolutely hear what you're saying too, Barb, about it. And as you all can imagine, this isn't just a small price tag project. So any advice or ideas that you have are greatly appreciated. Before we started with the fundraising process, I wanted to make sure we had your blessing to do so.
I mean, because some of the bids get put out, this doesn't have to be a 100% fundraised piece as well. There may be some district resources or allocations that we can apply over time to help get some of this done.
Great.
Wonderful. So thank you, Mr. McBurney, and Mrs. James, and the PTO, and all the groups. I appreciate that you involved such a large group of students and anyone willing to help with that. That's wonderful.
Great, thanks.
I move to approve the Elkhorn Area Middle School Outdoor Classroom Proposal as presented.
To move the second to approve the Elkhorn Area Middle School Outdoor Classroom Proposal as presented. All votes in there say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Addition proposal for options.
Okay, so when we passed the, went to referendum for options, we had 200 students, about 190, where we went to referendum and we had a successful referendum, which was great. We envisioned the building, you know, us getting up to about 500 kids in, I don't know, five to eight years. We were, thanks to COVID, we were at 600. We're probably down at about 570 now in options, making it our third largest school in the entire district. We had the good fortune of coming in under budget by roughly $650,000. So the building looks awesome. There's an open house, I believe, May 15th from 9:00 to 12:00 in the morning. And that's a Saturday. So that's great. But one of the things, as we looked at that and that $650,000, we went back and asked Kino and Henry to look at it and CG Schmidt and say, you know, could we, what would it look like to do a small addition? And so this is a fine design, a very efficient footprint. And what you see here on the left would be a small addition to the south side of the building. So it'd be modifying the plans. It still fits within the scope of the referendum. But in a sense, even though this one addition is adding one classroom, this room right here is really set up and used as office, teacher, workspace. And so by creating this 612 office area, so we have the elementary, then we have the 612 on the other side, it really frees up two classrooms. So in doing so, it's a little, the price tag on this is a little over what we had for, what was left over in the referendum, but we feel we could get those dollars through Bill's magic and using some, planting some other funds and using, we have additional S or dollars that could cover in other areas that could free up monies to help cover that additional project piece. And I think getting it done now would, and freeing up that space. Right now, they have three teachers per classroom in that 612 space already with our numbers. This would take it to two teachers per classroom, which is very manageable in that model that we work. So, yeah, I mean, it was a good unexpected that there was so much growth, but I, and also great that we came under budget. So that's, here's the finances for that project. What we'd be looking at is basically $838,000 total project budget with roughly, what is that, Bill, about $180,000 that we need to come up with?
180, 190, yeah.
Yeah.
You have your magic wand with you?
Well, we're going to have some federal dollars, which is going to help us.
We have to thank, yeah, President Trump and President Biden and the legislature, all of them, because that's given us resources to help cover.
Are they going to guarantee those prices?
Um, that's a budget, so it's all going to be based on the bids and the contractors. But they, I mean, our experience working with CG Schmidt is they've been really close and I think they're feeling comfortable with this plan. There's probably some details yet in terms of that picture and, you know, I think the, I think Tricia and Sarah have done a really nice job and your staff of identifying the program needs that they can do within that space. But some of the walls and doors and things like that will move. But I, what's nice is like the heating system, the piping we put in was for, large enough for our future addition.
Yeah.
So some of those things are not going to be a future cost.
I'm just.
I mean, that is at $312 a square foot.
I'm just acutely aware of.
Yeah.
Construction costs.
Material costs.
Rubber costs.
And not only just the cost, but we're moving, we're literally moving into a period of time where materials are not even just hard to find. They are scarce. They are not available. Right.
Yep. They did mention that, that the lead time on the component, certain, which, yeah, they're aware of the lead times and stuff and I, yeah, they've always been on, they could be off, but they've always been on or under before the.
And hopefully they're factoring in price increases, you know, to those.
They are.
I'd say they've been really good anytime we've ever used them.
You're right. This is unusual times.
Yeah.
What are you seeing in the residential per square foot cost?
It's insane. It's absolutely insane. I mean, it's, we just got notified today that prices are going to go up. Well, they went up another 5%. They've already gone up 30% in the last six months. They went up another 5%, 5% over the weekend. We're going to get another price increase of another 5% to 6% in two more weeks. And then an additional, by the end of May, an additional large increase. It's getting, it's actually getting scary.
So when we did the high school, the last referendum, I think those, those projects ran just under $200 a square foot. That sounds right? And so this is, yeah, 312.
That's about where things are at, between 250 and 300 a square foot.
So I think they've got it up.
Jason, I haven't been in the school yet and I'm trying to remember earlier conversations about doing this possible add-on. There was talks about like 612 restrooms. Are those, do we already have restrooms over there? Is that something that is going to make a budget?
There's, there's one right here and one right here, the unisex restrooms, handicap accessible. So it's only one toilet in each one.
Oh, the TLT is toilet?
Yeah, both of these right here. They're very nice sized restrooms. Kind of like that restroom at the high school that's right off the cafeteria straight ahead.
Yeah.
So there's two of them there, and it is a small building, so they do go down to the other ones if need be as well. Yeah, there was talk in this restroom, or this, not restroom, this workroom. And kind of we put it back to Tricia and Sarah, what do you guys want to do with that space? Because Tricia suggested, well, maybe we do this as a healthroom restroom. But I mean, my feeling was if you do that, you kind of lock that space up where you have a healthroom restroom 100 feet down the hall, I don't know, maybe 200 feet. It's not a big building. They have one down the other office. I may be a little more, like, my first job was the principal in the K12 building and all the kids were literally at one office at 12. But I think this will function really well for them. We did look at possibly, at first, we asked them to look at adding four classrooms, and that involved a significant amount of site work that would have to be done. I think their initial projection on that was around 1.8 million. Is that right? And we would have had to come up with, you know, over a million dollars. And that was just kind of, kind of how to reach, but this is real.
What's the cloud for?
Good question. I think that's the sewer venting, Barb.
I thought that was a dream, like that was somebody's dream.
Oh, it might just be, I don't know, this, this has a little corridor between the two. There's actually a teacher's desk right there they're using as kind of office space. Yeah, it does. I wonder if they had a comment in there before.
From a schedule standpoint, what we're hearing, at least talking with Bill Henry, is the planning, the plan design, and going through city approval processes, at least three months at this point. So, so what CG Schmidt has assumed is if they could begin construction in August, they'd be done by Christmas. So that's kind of the tentative plan.
They have to be convinced of why.
Yeah. Exactly.
But the way that.
For calendar dispenser, we could do without that, the liquid soap dispenser, one piece.
But the way it's set up, there's no reason why the rest of the school shouldn't be able to go on. They're just punching a couple holes because they have to have this orange line as a firewall that they have to set up. And this may change a little bit. They're, we're looking, they're looking at running the firewall up here and over because then that's even less things they have to do with those walls, so.
The growth that it gives us.
Yeah.
We're in this position because we did, went ahead with it when we did. The costs were a lot lower.
Yeah, thank goodness.
COVID mask, and I'm sure there were some people that were about to drop them, but.
Thank goodness we did. Yeah.
Any other questions? Otherwise, voting for motion.
I move to approve the proposed addition at options as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So move the second to approve the proposed addition at options as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gehart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Grakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, our school minutes, our school board minutes from March 22nd. Should attach to your agenda. Any questions on that? Comments? Concerns?
I move to approve the minutes of March 22nd, 2021 regular school board session meeting as presented.
Is there a second? To move the second to approve the minutes of the March 22nd, 2021 regular session school board meeting as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gehart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Grakowski? Mr. Reed?
Yes.
General and other fund bills, Mr. Drew.
The general and other fund bills this evening covers checks number 142, 607 through 142, 726. Wire transfers, 918 through 918. seven twenty six, wire transfers nine eighteen through nine thirty eight, ACH check numbers three thirty two through three sixty, and option renovation wire numbers eight ninety nine, nine oh three, nine oh five, nine seventeen and nine thirty nine. Voided checks number one three eight, nine eight eight, and one four zero, seven eight two, and one voided check, voided ACH of three two five, in the combined amount of one million, two hundred and sixty eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty two dollars and fifty six cents. And then there was a memo providing some additional information on several of the bills in your board packet.
Questions, Mr. Tryon? I have one question. I guess, I hadn't seen this, there was one bill for supporting our school, and that was twenty twenty one March, and this is the,
That's the, the middle school KTO is called our school.
Yeah, the twenty one.
All right, any other questions?
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of April twelfth, twenty twenty one, check numbers one four two, six zero seven to one four two, seven two six. Wire numbers nine one eight to nine three eight, ACH check numbers three three two to three six zero. Options renovation wire numbers eight nine nine, nine zero three, nine zero five, nine one seven and nine three nine. Voided check number is one three eight, nine eight eight, and one four zero, seven eight two. And voided ACH check number three two five in the combined amount of one million, two hundred and sixty eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty two dollars and fifty six cents as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So move in second to approve the general and other fund bills of April twelfth, twenty twenty one, checks number one four two, six zero seven to one four two, seven two six, wire numbers nine one eight to nine three eight. ACH check numbers three thirty two to three six zero. Options renovation wire numbers eight nine nine, nine zero three, nine zero five, nine one seven, nine thirty nine. Voided check numbers one three eight, nine eight eight, and one four zero, seven eight two. Voided ACH number three two five in the combined amount of one million, two hundred and sixty eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty two dollars and fifty six cents as presented.
Pro call.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gehart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Grikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Ye- yes.
Important discussion, student part.
Great, so over at the high school, um, we're happy to report that Officer Capatch's Olympics raised three thousand nine hundred and ninety six dollars for the Officer Joe Capatch of Marlon. Um, the Elkhorn Autism Support Team is celebrating our April Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month. Last Tuesday, eighteen stu-, um, eighteen students competed in a three two one academic competition. And then this past Saturday, Pravas Hall of High School. Um, over at the middle school, they celebrated their March Students of the Month. Uh, Mr. McFury delivered breakfast to Middle School South sporting his Walworth County Drug and Alcohol Coalition shirt to raise awareness. In sixth grade social studies class, students experienced the collapse of the American economy before, during and after the stock market crash of nineteen twenty nine through the game of Jenga. At Jackson, um, April fifteenth is Rainbow Day for Hope Now, so each grade will wear a different color. The Jackson PTA is holding a bra-, a fundraiser on April seventeenth. And this past Friday, students turned in their kindness bingo cards. Um, to fill in each sweater, they had to do a small act of kindness. At Tivitz, um, this past Friday was their college gear day. And during morning drop-off, students were able to display items that they created, um, that would be up for auction at the online art auction. Um, at Westside, the book fair opened today and students recently had their American Heart Association Kids Heart Challenge slime tie where they were able to slime tissues as a reward for their participation. Um, all elementary school students are also encouraged to participate in this year's virtual creativity conference. At Options, um, Options families will be receiving a kind tree ceiling this week with plenty of instructions from the Wisconsin D and R. Um, Ms. Monday, Options art teacher and UW Whitewater art professor, um, and her UW art students will be hosting an art night as a part of their final exam to do a variety of hands-on art projects with Options families. Um, and this is the fourth year Ms. Monday has brought her students to Options to provide this experience. Um, the art night will take place on Tuesday, April twenty seventh. And then finally, at, um, Korean College Academy, Adams Lecter gave students a direct look into the numerous services and trades that Adams Lecter provides. And the students learned how every employee at Adams lives their company values of excellence, integrity, attitude, people and partnership. And then the Elkhorn Youth Bill students are almost ready to put a roof on their house. Um, they recently showed their skills and accomplishments to Whitewater's economic and government leaders. And they've also been featured in an article in the Whitewater banner.
All right, Dr. Tryon is reporting still.
One last time, I get to steal the mouse from Jesus. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Rita Gaffes and I'm the Director of Special Education and People's Services. And I'm here tonight to tell you about, um, special education and what I'm going to phrase as our report card from special education. So these are also known as the local education agency determinations, um, dealing with our federal law IDEA. So, um, the whole goal of this is to see that we have made a lot of changes in the last several years, uh, but we will continue to improve based on the data that we are receiving from the state and the federal government. So by the end of this presentation, I hope that, uh, this will help you to understand how we are measured as a special education program, as a district, where our RDA has taken us. It's not just about compliance anymore. Um, what our data looks like for special education programming and where we will need to improve moving forward. So the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which is our federal law that drives special education, requires the Department of Public Instruction in each state, our Wisconsin DPI, to determine annually if each school district has met the requirements set out by the federal government and IDA. They do this by monitoring what are called indicators. If you recall, I think some of this terminology, those of you who've been on the board a while, remember me presenting, Matt and Barbara shaking their head about RDA, we're way back five, six years ago. Um, and federal government said that we need to base accountability in special education more on results rather than just compliance. And so the law was changed back then. Wisconsin took the RDA, um, acronym here and instead of calling it results driven accountability, they decided to call it reading drives achievement. And, um, over the last three years, the federal government has found a way to combine the efforts of the Every Student Succeeds Act with IDA, again, that blending, like you heard in co-plan, co-serv. Okay, that blending of general education and special education together, they, they provide a nice little report called the Joint Federal Notifications Package to us. And, um, they've been doing this the last three years. So we get a report that tells us, uh, what our results are in the different areas that they're looking at. If, in order to, um, meet requirements, you have to have a score of at least eighty percent. You can see here in the last three years, um, our score has gone down a little bit. And we are considered in, uh, an area that is called Needs Assistance Year Two. So the question might be asked, why has our score dropped? Are we, I thought we were improving in special ed. I thought, you know, we, we're making all these changes. Well, what I want you to know is that the bar changed. And I think I may have mentioned this a couple of years ago in a presentation, is that years ago, we were only looking at compliance. Were you checking the boxes right on your IEPs? Were your dates right on your IEPs? We were not judged in special education at all on the results are, are, of our, our, what we're doing with kids. And, um, so they changed the bar. You can see over these four years, they went from ninety percent compliance and only ten percent results, and they moved up and up. Now we are at fifty fifty, uh, where your score is based on fifty percent compliance and fifty percent, um, results. Um, and, uh, so, and if you want some additional information, you can look here. These are all the different indicators that were judged on. This is, this is just a link to the DPI website. We won't do that now, cause my report is way too long anyway. So I'm trying to hurry. I'm trying to hurry, uh, cause I gave Amy a hard time last week, or last time that she went on, so I'm trying, Amy. So, um, so.
Timing, Rita, so you know.
So here's how ESD did, has done the last three years and what we've shown up in that joint federal report. Notice what you see in the area of compliance. You know, we're doing a good job, a hundred percent the last three years. And then notice what we've done in results. We had fifty percent results on the indicators that judge you. But remember, each time, how many, um, how many were judged in, uh, results, how many indicators were judged by results has gone up. We're at fifty fifty now. So here's our little report card as I'm calling it, okay? That's what I'm entitled in it. Um, there were sixteen items, each worth two points, and we came up with seventy five percent. You can see that these are the indicator numbers. These are what they call them. This is the type they are, the results, or whether they're compliance-based, and you can see it's fifty, there's eight in compliance, eight in results, right? And then this is the rate at which we scored on that indicator. Then this is the percentile of how we rate amongst all the other schools in the state. And this will be very important. And then based on this percentile is the points that we earn in those areas. So if you look back, we had a zero in this area, so why not look at this first area? What does it mean to get a zero in educational environment for our students who are six to twenty one? This indicator is a measure of how many students with IEPs are served inside a regular classroom with their peers who do not have IEPs. And they are in there eighty percent of the school day. So you can see where efforts in co-plan, co-serv, this is an area that we got a zero. So what you saw tonight, co-plan, co-serv, could not have been a better presentation to show you that we are clearly working in this area. Um, notice, and this is something that's taken right off the students' IEPs that goes directly in the skyward, goes directly into Wise Dash and, you know, goes to DPI. Notice this. Notice that we were at sixty eight point eight three percent of our kids were in the gen ed environment, eighty percent or more. But yet, we earned zero points. To get one point, look at how close we were, you guys. Everybody do them one, one more time. That's what I did too. To earn two points, to earn two points, double one, right? Okay.
Rita, in this, in this scale, does this also include, um, students that are at?
Lakeland?
Lakeland?
Yes. In that scale it does.
So, you know, and that's, that's something that you'll notice. So any of our students that are at Lakeland automatically would.
They're in a different, they're in a different environmental code. They're in environmental code D, which is a separate school. I'll show you information on that in just a minute. Okay? So here we are. It's important to read this graph, okay? We're gonna give a little quick lesson. This blue part is the statewide distribution. So notice that even though we were right here and very close to getting one point, right? Very close to getting two points, where is the majority of the rest of the state? And that's, as Jason said, becomes difficult because we do have a, a wonderful, fantastic school like Lakeland. Okay? But our kids don't get enough when they're at Lakeland. They get zero opportunity to be in the general education environment.
Yeah, that's true.
Zero. I mean, they, they can't be in there fifty percent, forty percent. They can't be in there at all.
Right.
And I got, I'm not being critical of Lakeland. Please, it's a wonderful, amazing place. It's just, it, it's just the way it is. That's what's a decent thing to be pronouncing that. So you're probably asking, we've been working on this for a long time. Don't we have a lot of kids in the general education environment? I just saw that report on co-plan, co-serv. I do have some longitudinal data attached there. So I just want you to see, oh, excuse me, it's not D, it's five C. Separate schools is what's being judged here. This is our, our Lakeland population. And if we send anybody out to a separate school, what do you notice has happened over the last ten years? It's actually gone down, right? The percent of students, this is the percent, not the number, but this is the percent of students at Lakeland. This is the percent of students inside the general education, less than forty percent of the time. So again, kids who are, were mostly pulled out, okay, they're in gen ed over sixty percent of the time. What has happened to that number, to that percent? It's gone down. Now, this is the percentage of kids, this is the five A, the kids who are in the regular ed environment, more than eighty percent. What do you notice about this number?
I'm sure we should get two points.
Exactly, all right. So this, our trend has been great, right? So how do we still end up with zero points, right? If the number of students go to Lakeland has gone down, the number of students who spent less than forty percent in gen ed has gone down, and the number of our students in the gen ed eighty percent or more has gone up, right? Here's what you have, the numbers tell you. This picture right here indicates one third, one third and one third of the state. We're being compared to the state. So you see our percentile rate? Even though our percentage rate was very close to getting one point, two points, we have a large hump of the state here that we are competing with. As our scores go up, maybe their scores go up. We're still at the twenty eighth percentile of the state. So in this area, since we're below thirty three percent, or yeah, the thirty third percentile, excuse me, not percent, thirty third percentile in the state, we didn't get any points. So not only do we have to increase our rate, but we gotta give half to some other schools.
Who's at the top?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. So that's the educational environment. That was our only zero. Okay, that was our only zero. But I wanna tell you statistically, all we have to do is get two points and we'd be back at eighty percent. Okay? So that was zero points right there, so close. So the next thing that they judge us on is the number of students with IEPs who graduate from high school with a regular diploma within four years. Okay? What might be ironic about using this statistic? Well, how about transition? If you are a school that provides excellent transition services for kids ages eighteen to twenty one, you're actually getting dinged on this. If you keep kids in high school with special education needs with, for more than four years, you get dinged on this indicator. So let's think about the excellent transition program that is offered at Lakeland School.
Yeah, yeah.
Excellent. These kids are getting what they need to transition into
Right, yeah.
post-secondary, you know, into, into life, right?
Yeah.
And we are now also doing that at our high school, keeping kids for a fifth year to provide them with what they need so that after they earn their credits, and maybe they stay another year or another semester to get what they need to be successful once they leave. But we're.
No schools shall be named, but I know a lot of districts who will purposely not necessarily disclose all the entitlements or what the kids are, could have access to, and that they don't have to graduate eighteen to get them, cause to be frank, it, it's easier for them. It's less expensive to give them their diploma, graduate and say, yeah, um, good luck. So, yeah, this, this is one of those metrics that, some of these metrics we just can't care about because it doesn't make sense.
So, you know me, guys. You think that that sat very well with me?
No, no.
So I got on the phone and called DPI. I said, this doesn't make any sense to me. And the good news is that they are looking at changing the cohorts and how they're recording this data in the future. I don't know, you know, the next two to three years, so Emily, give me a call and let me know. Don't let them forget that I called them, okay? All right? So, um, it will be changing. I got on the hot, this is the hotline. Okay, so the other one pointers that we wanna look at is our participation in our statewide assessment.
Can you go back real quick, Rita? Show them the.
Can you go back? I didn't, oh, wait, oh, wait, I got it. Okay.
So if you look at the very top, obviously we're, we score low on the graduation four years, but if you look at indicator number two, very few, we're at the hundredth percentile, very few, keep school districts get every single kid with an IEP to graduate. That's a much more important indicator to me than getting a. That's a much more important indicator to me than getting it done.
And what's, and what's the target percentile, guys? Over 33? We'd have to have 34, the 34th percentile to get one point.
But we have 100% graduation, that's a huge thing to celebrate.
Yeah.
So math participation, just so you're aware, only, this is lagged data because we didn't take state assessments last year, remember? We had that COVID thing going, that's April. But the A C T, the A C T wasn't this prior to COVID. But we have seven students who didn't take the state math assessments. That would be to be the A C T, the forward, or the dynamic learning math for kids with their most significant disabilities that attend Lakeland. Okay? And notice again, we're right here, but notice where the majority of the state is. But that's with only some students not taking it. So we really need all of our students to take that assessment. I'm very torn on this because for some kids, taking, oh, you know, taking this, this assessment, it's so stressful, it's so nerve-wracking, it sends their anxiety. Why, it's like almost cruel and inhumane punishment. But, yep, I, I get it. It's one thing we're being judged on, okay? We had 10 students that did not take the state English language arts assessment. And again, notice where we're at. Okay, that drops us down to the 19th percentile, but we did earn one point still. So we have to get above that, be in that top, uh, third. So our test participation reality, um, again, we have high rates, but our percentile rank, you know, is below there because of this one-third, one-third. You know, we need to be at the 34th percentile to be able to earn that one.
So I think it's something that we can certainly look at and encourage the families. We've talked about that yet morally and ethically. If the kid, if it's not good for the kid, we're not gonna make them take it so they get another point. And any parent can opt the kid out legally. They have that right to do that. So we'll, we'll be sensitive while positively encourage.
And I would say that most of ours are parent opt-outs. It's not my special education staff saying.
There's no, there's no break for parent opt-outs.
No.
So the next thing is proficiency on those tests, okay? We got one point on that. And again, this is the number of students who demonstrated proficiency on the state assessments, A C T, forwarder, D L M, divided by the total number of students with I E Ps who took the test. So this is not comparing Gen Ed to Special Ed because that, that would be, you know, not equitable or fair. And so what you see here is, again, this is lagged data that they used, um, but you can see that we were, um, we, uh, had a rate of 12.9. So you see how the rate is very low, but where did that put us? At the 45th percentile. So that means our students in Special Ed are achieving almost at, you know, better or close to the same as 50% of the other kids in the state on their, on the assessments. This is in math and then even higher in E L A. Again, this is just our Special Ed students. And look at, when you get over the hump of the majority of the, um, majority of the state, you know, I, I could see with all the work that we're doing right now, I, I could see this, you know, going into the dark green very soon.
So in order to be considered proficient in E L A in the state, you roughly need to score at the 65th percentile within the state. So when you look at that number and say, wait, we only had, um, to get one point, well, let's see, what's our, 12.74? Only 12.74% of our, that means 12.74% of our students with an I E P scored above the 65th percentile. If that makes sense, the cut's pretty high. That's why in math, if you go back, or I'll go back, I would speculate the math is higher because the math cut is about 10 percentile points lower. It's about the 55th. Actually, they're pretty close about the same number. But to be proficient in math, you need to roughly be around the 55th percentile. So it, it's still a very high bar.
And then here's the double-edged sword. What happens when a kid improves so much in their academic areas? What, what do we do with them? We say they don't need special education anymore. So then the, the top achievers are taken out of this, out of this list.
Yeah, that happened to Ross.
And that was something we called and brought up to D P I's attention as well. And they did modify it to keep, they now will count them for three years, is that right? After they've been dismissed? But I think previously it was just the one year, and then, oh, that's great, you're proficient, now you don't need an I E P, and then you would no longer count them. And that, so there's no way to track really how good you were.
Yeah.
Because the high achieving kids always keep dropping out.
Yeah.
So, yeah, or not drop, yeah, dropping, or dismissed from Special Ed. I said that in front of them. Didn't you catch me, Bob?
Is an important distinction.
Yeah. So, um, our proficiency reality, I, I'm really proud of this, you know, more than anything, I, of the statistics that I'm showing you today, I'm very proud of this. Um, we're doing well as almost half of the state, we have kids with I E Ps. So I, I think that's pretty cool. Um, and then the last, uh, um, data I want to show you is our educational environment. I showed you where we got the zero. These were our kids that were six years old to 21 years old. Now I'm gonna show you the educational environmental codes for our littlest learners, our three-to-five year olds who are in what we call our early childhood programming. Um, and again, you can see, uh, here we are, 34th percentile. So we were above that one-third, one-third. This is in 2020. Um, this measures the percentage of students, our littlest learners, three to five years old, with I E Ps. Okay, so these are kids that we are getting out of the birth of free program, are very early child find, where they're gonna receive special education services. And they spend the majority, or greater than 50%, of their special education related services in the regular early childhood program. This becomes a little bit difficult for us because where are, where are our regular programs? Oh, they're not in our buildings. Our four-year-old programs are not in our buildings, they're out in 4K centers. So the kids would have to be in 4K programs. We do have two, what we call self-contained rooms, one at Westside and one here for our earliest learners, and that is where our three-year-olds attend and some four-year-olds. So, um, this is a tough one to work on, but we have worked on it and our, and our rates have, um, our rates have gone up in that area as well. Okay? So in summary, I want to say that I think our trend is in the right direction in the individual areas. In each of those individual areas that I showed you, I think the trend is in the right area, we're moving in the right direction. I think the systems are established. I'm ready and excited to hear what the future holds for Elkhorn. I think we're in a good place. Uh, I, I'm not embarrassed at all by the fact that we're in this needs assistance mode because we're doing the right work, and we've been doing the right work for the last couple of years. And, you know, the bar did change on us. And, um, I, uh, I'm happy to be involved in the continuous improvement progress. And, um, as we move forward, um, we are gonna continue the efforts that we've put in as far as professional development, inclusive programming, our collaborative efforts, and also holding kids even with I E Ps to rigorous expectations, you know? Um, and that will happen through a continuous improvement plan and process that we are meeting and putting together, um, in two weeks. And, um, I'm very excited. And I, and I also know that this is some of the same work that Emily has been working on at the school she's coming from. I don't think that you could be in better hands. I'm super excited for what is the future for Special Education, uh, Elkhorn Area School District, and I'm very proud to have worked here, and I want to thank all of you for your support.
I don't do a ton, Amy.
Rita, nice job. I think you came in four minutes under mine, so that's awesome. Well done.
One of our favorite songs here. "Hold it up, babe." Yes, um, we unfortunately had, we do have a couple cases. Actually, this one, it'll be up there, I think tomorrow we have another case popped. The numbers are still quite low. We did do the rapid testing of 200 and I believe roughly 70 kids for prom. We did have two come back positive.
Oh, really?
Both were asymptomatic at the time, one developed symptoms the next day. Um, so I'm glad that we did that. I felt really bad for the two kids, but we were able to avoid, um, potentially significant exposures and having to quarantine everyone. It also kind of reinforces again, we're following, you know, the health department guidelines. I have some questions after the Supreme Court overturned Governor Evers' mandate. But I, I anticipated it back when the legislature voted to undo it. I, I don't know how he put out another emergency order, but he did. But we communicated to parents back then, which was about two months ago, that regardless of the Evers' mandate or not, we're following the health department, local and C B C guidelines. And again, I know I shared with the board that from our insurance company, it does open us up to a liability piece potentially if we disregard health department guidelines completely. Um, I get it if we wouldn't ask the health department, hey, can we hold a prom? They'd say, no, are you nuts? But we, we phased that off of and still, um, you know, we want to give the experiences and the opportunities to the kids and do it as, as safe a manner as possible. So that's why we felt comfortable that we could hold a prom in a safe manner by having really large spaces and doing the rapid testing. And so, um, some of you may have been contacted, there was some misunderstanding and communication from some that they thought that they could do a medical exemption waiver by filling out the vaccination waiver form. We got that straightened out. And, um, I know there's some people, I don't know of anyone who said, yay, I love to wear this mask and I can't wait to put it on in the morning and go out in the world. I don't know a single person that likes that. But I just spoke to a parent today whose kid, I believe, will need to be quarantined. She, you know, had indicated that, no, we take this very serious, I have no problem quarantining my kid, I just lost my dad. And it's still happening, the numbers can change quickly, and I'd hate to be in the situation that due to lack of, you know, um, care, that we could be potentially, you know, responsible for helping spread something that's unvulnerable. So that's where we're still at. When the health department guidelines change, we'll shift that. Thankfully, the numbers are still low and, you know, overall, we're doing really good with managing it and mitigating it, and the kids are having a good school experience. For the most part, I was, oh, yeah, I had to leave. Toby, how's life with the mask at school? Are you still on, or did you have to leave too?
He's still there.
All right. Anything to add, Toby? All right.
I'm sorry, I had some food in my mouth, so I didn't want to.
That's all right. Anything to add, Toby?
Um, I mean, I don't have any problem with it. I've gotten pretty like acquainted with it, but I have noticed a lot of kids have started to either just not wear it at all, or just do like the whole chin strap thing. And it's kind of weird. It's not like a majority of the students, but in all of my classes, I'll have like one or two. But personally, I have no issue with it, so.
Okay, so that's where we're at with it right now, and I, I hope that at some point we'll be where, you know, that guidance can change and we'll be able to move forward on that. Um, that's all I had for COVID. Unless there's any questions. All right. Uh, okay, we have a number of retirements. Dorothy Beaver, who was a teaching assistant out at Tivens, we want to thank her for her 21 years of service. It's much appreciated. Um, Alan Gotowski, who's a custodian over at Tivens, he's retiring after two years with the school district. Uh, we want to thank Pamela Person for her many years of service to the school district. She's taken another, um, teaching assistant position in a local daycare, so she'll still be working with our students, just not through the district. Well, I thank Chad Stoltz for his time as a boys' basketball assistant coach. And then would like to go ahead and introduce, Emily Lind was selected, um, by a large committee that serves as our Nets Director of Special Education. I did ask Emily to come and attend and give a five-minute speech or something. No, I'm joking. I said she has, doesn't have to prepare anything, but.
No, I'm super excited to be here, honestly. And after, you know, just listening tonight, I'm sitting here thinking, I wish I didn't have to wait two months to start. I just cannot wait to join this team. I am just thrilled and excited to do this work alongside your, your team and your staff. I'm highly passionate about students. I've worked at Wheaton for about 13 years now. I started out as a school site, um, kind of morphed into a, a director site role, actually due to Jason's encouraging way back when. Um, and have just really, I feel like grown in my love and passion for student services and designing systems that meet the needs of all learners in an inclusive setting. So I cannot wait to join the team here. Rita has really set, you know, I think, the stage, so it should, it should be really fun to just jump right in. So thanks so much, and, uh, I'm not sure if there's anything else you want to know about me. I also have four children of my own who I'm hoping to actually bring to Elkhorn, so I'm kind of exploring that open enrollment process right now.
Any questions for Emily? Thank you, Emily, for coming and, uh, going through the board. Yes. Haley Mogensen has been appointed as an athletic coach for girls', um, soccer assistant coach. Tyler Ellsworth is a high school track assistant coach, and Courtney Horat is a girls' basketball assistant coach.
Any questions for us, Ken? Emily's looking for a motion to approve.
I moved to approve the personal recommendation sheet for April 12, 2020, including new employment contracts, conditions on passing the background check, and district mandated drug screen as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moving to second to approve the personal recommendation sheet for April 12, 2021, including new employment contracts, conditions on passing the background check, the district mandated drug screen as presented. Provo.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Skaro?
Yes.
Ms. Girkowski? She had the lead. And Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Motion carried. School gifts.
We have one school gift present this evening, and that is the Elkhorn area middle school P T O donated $420 for the purchase of playground equipment.
Looking to motion to approve.
I move to accept the general school gifts as presented.
Is there a second? So moving second to accept the general school gifts of the, of the middle school P T O as presented.
I'm sorry, who was the second on that? Oh, thank you, Paul. Uh, Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Skaro?
Yes.
Ms. Girkowski is, Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Motion carried, announcements?
And number on announcements, uh, this evening, the election canvas is tomorrow, starting at 8 o'clock A M. The top 10 recognition, the board generally doesn't get to participate in that as we do that, um, as a conference and principals and superintendents at the Cotton Mill. Um, that has been canceled this year due to COVID and getting all the different districts together and removed, it sounds wise. So what we'd like to do instead is at the high school on April 26th, prior to our school board meeting at 5 o'clock in a high school cafeteria, would like to have light and refreshments, invite the school board members, if you're available to come. We'll just, um, do a presentation of the certificates to the top 10 students, and their families can be there for some light refreshments, and then we'll come over here. Uh, April 26th, so, you know, just prior to our next school board meeting. All right, um, just wanted to announce hot off the press, our Skills USA was just, uh, named, and I put in a quote here, "Congratulations to you and your chapter on achieving the highest level of the Skills USA Chapter Excellence Program. Models of excellence, as a models of excellence winner, your chapter is among an elite group of the top 24 Skills USA Chapters nationally." Yes, that's a huge accomplishment because Skills USA encompasses high schools and Yes, that's a huge accomplishment because Skills USA encompasses high schools and career technical colleges. So quite an accomplishment that, I want to thank Mr. Gantor for his leadership on and the work and the efforts that they did. And they actually sent it to the state director because it's such a big honor just to even have a school within your state be named to that, and we were named as, they'll officially announce it on April 15. But in launch that celebration, we were named for the area of personal. And so in looking at the categories and the portion Y, and, you know, Mr. Kill had shared that he thinks it really has to do with giving us a lot of credit for what we were able to do with all of our students during COVID, and the fact that we still ran programs, we still did offerings, and still gave those experiences out there as well as the great work they're doing. I just wanted to point out, because it's kind of, I mean, when I look at it, I'm blown away. Just within the past five years, the FFA received a national recognition of similar stature for our, the caliber of their program. Last year, the youth apprenticeship program that we have received national recognition. HOSI, I believe, was named the national recognition, our advisor was the, of the entire international HOSI club. And our cybersecurity program received national recognition, our project, lead-the-way program, we're one of 25 districts in the nation. So, I don't know, it almost seems redundant, but it's a reflection of incredible work that those teachers, advisors, and the team are doing over there, and just really humbled by their efforts and what they put together. Really is an example where all of us seem to elevate each other to great heights. And I know our culinary arts are doing amazing things, our metals programs, our milling, our welding. We, you know, we do more transcript of credits despite us not being close to the largest high school in the area of all of Gateway Technical College's region, which does the most in the state. And also, I don't want to, our auto shop program, they're constantly winning competitions, very amazing work. So a big shout out to all of the CTP staff and for all of their efforts and what they do.
Yeah.
Alright, that's all I have pretty announced. Other than we do have a closed session immediately following.
I move for adjourned closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85. From 11th C to discuss a professional staff personnel matter, the school board will not reconvene in open session.
Is there a second?
No, I'm second.
The move in second to adjourn the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, 1C, to discuss a professional staff personnel matter, the school board will not reconvene in open session.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scaro?
Yes.
Ms. Girkowski? Is, I'm sorry, Mr. Reed? Like the letter, I just read what's on.